To the reference of business. The first item is an ordinance adopting the implementing rules and regulations of Republic Act Number 100028 entitled "An Act Expanding the Promotion of Rest Feeding, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 700", otherwise known as an "Act Providing Incentive" to all government and private health institutions with grooming in and breastfeeding practices and for other purposes. The next item, number two, is an ordinance adopting Republic Act Number 11148, cited as the Kalusugal Adoption by Wangyananay Act, otherwise known as an "Act Scating up the National and Local Health and Nutrition Programs through a Strengthened Integrated Strategy for Maternal, Neonatal, Child Health and Nutrition in the First One Thousand Days of Life, Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes."
Councillor Apol Bakai, the Chairperson of Health.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you about continuing regarding this ordinance, item number one and item number two on October 14 at 9:00 AM?
Councillor Apol Bakai, the Chairman of Health, scheduled for committee hearing, that said two items on October 14, 9 o'clock in the morning. Any second to that, seconded by Councillor Rapago and Councillor Sison. Next item, Madam Secretari.
Under proposed resolutions, we have the first item is the resolution approving the purchase, procurement of 10 units multi-purpose vehicles to be used by the barangay specially for on the rescue, roofing, and mastrow, or amounting to 10 million, eh, 190,000 pesos only, uh, to 1,089,000 per unit. Then, item number two is the resolution approving additional partial list of projects funded under the following funds. For the 20% development fund, we have our projects amounting to 1,539,574 pesos on each present double. And for special purpose appropriations, it amounts to 1,228,025 pesos. And item number three is the resolution of our city mayor Art Ryan Cisildeste to enter into a tripartite memorandum agreement between and among the local government unit of Palaminos City Pangasinan, Bureau of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources, Regional Fishery Office One, and the Regional Fishery Fox Representative for the implementation of fishery development projects in line with the city's Ethan Million Cat Award in the recently concluded search for the most outstanding coastal municipality community, Malinis at Masaganan Karagatan or the NNK Awards.
Same with the pressure of the party regarding item number one. Councillor...
May I have a question? Can I have a question?
Someone? The item number one, yung sa KND. Wala. Actually, uh... Madam Secretari, what was the information given by our extension office?
Sir, yung, we have this already, this kind of resolution approved by the body, but due to being a change of price, and sa kayong specific type of vehicles, kaya po nag request ko na ng paibangong resolution. That was information given to me by Mr. General Gilbert Polina from CGSO.
Councillor Apol Bakai, are you... Alam mo ba 'to, yung sa pag-ano KND? Yung first budget, ito na tayo sa budget na.
Pero, kinakaw lang sa pagiging, uh, pininsin na.
Sabay na.
Oo, sabay na, para isa lang yung, uh, paper na pag-1 sa KND. Sa, uh, 2010. Sa paper, pagkatapos, susunod, 10 batok, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Pagodan ng available naman yung part.
Kung available na part?
Hindi, available na.
Available na?
Oo, available na.
So, do you suggest po na i-defer muna natin 'to sa next session? Or, para... Dina, invite Mike siya naman. Gusto mo bang i-hearing, councillor, or... Or i-invite muna natin siya sa next session?
Invite na lang sa next session.
Okay. Councillor Apol Bakai moves to defer the said resolution, item number one, regarding the provision for 10 minutes vehicles to be deferred in our next regular session to the Madam Secretari, guiding by our budget officer and, uh... Our budget officer and GSO head. Any second to that, seconded by Councillor Ranoy. Any objection? Hearing none, the said resolution is deferred for our next regular session and, uh, Madam Secretari, can I invite our guest to be tackled, uh, in next regular session? Next item is the additional partial list of funds. Councillor Rado, the Chairman of Finance. Wala. Do you have any suggestion may niya naihiwalay natin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number two. Resolutions, uh, for the development fund will be separated from the resolution for this special appropriation. With that, I hope that the providers will give it to the business of the day.
Okay. Just be moved by Councillor Sidi Rado. Any second, that we include this in our business of the day and by Councillor Segundera and Councillor, Councillor Ranoy, to include the said item in our business of the day for deliberation given that the two, that the resolution be separated, one for the development fund and second for the special purpose appropriation.
Matuha, dito yung... Dito yung... Suprematary budget.
Mahin mo doon, mayroon na yung panati, um, adjustas natin. Uh, part.
So, for the next item, Madam Secretari. We have a guest. Please apologize your guest.
So, uh, for our, for the next item, we have Madam Vicky Pasagoy from the, our, the Officer in Charge of our City Agriculture Office and, um, Kamki Oyson, also from our City Agriculture Office.
There, Councillor Segundera moves to suspend our rules and, uh, seconded by Councillor Rado to accommodate our guests. Hi, ma'am, magandang hapon po sa inyo. You have the floor to explain, uh, the said resolution?
Your Honor, Anton Miguel Valverde, members of the San Luis Pampanso, ang ating mga guests, magandang unat, magandang hapon po sa inyo naan. Natitukmo kami ng ating kasama, ang ating aquaculturist para sa resolution approving, eh, for the approval of the resolution, authorizing our honorable Mayor Art Ryan Cisildeste return into memorandum agreement para sa ating, uh, premio mula sa Malinis at Masaganan Karagatan. Ang sinasaad sa memorandum of agreement na ito ay, ang obligation ng ating parties, ang DA BIFAR, Region One, will transfer the amount of 18 million to fund the above projects identified by the LGU. Ang project natin ay tatawagin nating project art. Ito po ay action for resource conservation towards habitat management. Next obligation ng ating DA, provide technical assistance in the implementation of the projects as requested by the LGU Alaminos. Third, require the LGU Alaminos to implement the project base on the approved work and financial plans and/or program of works. Require the LGU City of Palaminos to submit list of project beneficiaries for monitoring purposes and submit monthly status report using the prescribed report form through the Provincial Fishery Office. Conduct regular consultation and/or assessment workshops of the Fisheries livelihood program with the implementing LGU. Require the LGU to submit duly audited liquidation report and credit notice after procurement of the goods and services. And require the LGU to submit terminal report upon completion of the project indicating the project output, beneficiaries, photo documentation, and benefits derived from the project. Ito naman po yung ating mga obligation sa kanila. Una, acknowledge receipt of the transferred fund by issuing official receipt to the DA BIFAR R 101. Provide the corresponding counterpart funds for the above listed projects if needed. Administer, manage, disburse the said fund for its above purpose in accordance with accounting and auditing rules and regulations and in accordance to the provisions of Republic Act 9184. Submit monthly status report of project implementation using the prescribed reporting format and list of project beneficiaries to Bureau of Fish and Aquatic Resources Regional Fishery Office One through the Provincial Fishery Office. Project beneficiaries shall be registered Fisher Fox. Submit terminal report upon completion of the project indicating project output, beneficiaries, and LGU's derived from the project. Submit to the DA BIFAR R 101 photos with captions of the projects on the three stages of implementation. Ito yung before, during, and after implementation for documentation. Submit to the DA BIFAR R 101 the audited liquidation report and credit of notice duly verified by its resident auditor. Return or refund to the DA BIFAR R 101 any excess or unused fund transfer after the completion of the projects.
Okay, po?
Okay.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Any questions for the body? Councillor Apol Bakai.
Uh, Mr. Chair, ma'am, ma'am, yung itinbigyan ng mga, yung babigyan na sa mga project, yung postan base na.
Yung mga Fisher Fox po natin, sir.
Fisher Fox, hindi sabihin, hindi nadahan sa barangay.
Dadaan po yun, sir. Uh, may, alak po ng ating mga gagawin, idadaan at idataan din muna natin sa barangay.
Alam ba mo, may gusto din yung barangay ng mga livelihood? Di ba feeling dun sa barangay din? Oh, yung sinasabi po sa Fisher Fund?
Meron po tayong mga livelihoods, itatap po natin ang ating barangays. Barangay Council, barangay council, ano din matapoy niyo, sir?
Hindi, kasi sabi nung, uh, Fisher Fox, oo na, babigyan dito sa, sa price na award. May, parang dapat, alin ba, walang, sa akin, may Fisher, may Fisher Fox dun. Kasi ang part nila, uh, fish trap. Meron silang gusto yun, meron din gusto ang barangay of sir, na magkailangan dun sa, kwan. Hindi ba feeling babalik yun sa barangay of sir?
Kasi sir, at dinutupoy niyo po, ang barangay council kumpost din siya ng barang, uh, Fisher Fox. Kaya pwede po, sir. Uh, patulong po kay Gati, kasi niyo yung ating aquaculturist.
Yeah, ma'am, yeah, doctor.
Ito ang signan po, marble numbers of this Obisgabi. Uh, for the question po ni barangay ABC President, uh, Sir Raoul Bakai, Honorable Raoul Bakai. Ang pagkakayan ko po ay, nabigyan po kayo ng paghahatawan ng ating kong City Agriculturalist, yung si Mam Arcedi talan yan, meron po kayong session na lahat ng mga barangay captain na mag-submit po kayo ng mga, uh, project proposal para po sa kanya-kanya kunin yung barangay. Dahil binigyan po kayo ng, uh, budget para po doon, yung sa 18 million. Pero meron po kasing, uh, guidelines sa ating kong BIFAR Central Office. Meron po silang sinabmit na, meron po silang pinorwards sa LGU na mga shop list, yung mga allowed na projects na puwede lang po natin na paggamitan doon sa 18 million. Hindi po lahat ng gusto natin ay puwede po dun sa shop list na binigay po nila. And for the information, um, lahat po ay, mostly ay dapat para po sa livelihood ng ating kong mga Fisher Fox, directly sa mga Fisher Fox.
Okay, so, Councillor Bakai.
Atoli, uh, ma'am, alin ba ba, ang Luka gustong mag-aalaga niyang lak-lako. Pwede ba yun?
Sir, kasama po dito sa project lister, yung pag-aalaga po ng lak-lako, pero nakalagay siya sa barangay balidaan dahil sila po yung nag-request. And as I heard before.
Kasi, kasi, kasi sabi sa akin ni mga talan na, suning, uh, kung ano yung, uh, less lot na naayon sa pagkaakitaan dun sa barangay, yun yung, yun yung ipa-trade. Isa Luka, may tradisyon, yung, ano eh, na suning nga.
But, ma'am, is that final or ready?
Uh, puwede, ito po yung, kasi apurado po sila sa yun ang mag-submit time. Meron silang, uh, time frame. Dapat September 13, makapagsubmit po tayo ng project proposal. And then, para i-download po nila yung premio. Yung kung, yung kung sa inyo po, alin ba, hindi po kayo, gusto kunin yung mag-alaga ng lak-lako, but then, hindi po based sa zoning ay hindi po puwede dun sa Luka. Pwede po ang mga taga-Luka, pero doon sila sa balidaan.
Pero sa, sa Luka, ma'am, anong feeling dun?
Kasi gusto niya na.
Hindi, 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 iluwan po lang, pero sa Luka, ano yung feeling na maging landlub?
Kasi may mga products po tayo, pagaya ng mga fishing gear, assistance. So, kung ano po yung puwede na, kung anong gusto ng mga Fisher Fox po ninyo dun sa inyo.
Kasi, kasi, ma'am, nung, kwan sa yung fishing gear dun, atoli, nagbibilang kayo ng mga lambat, fishing gear dun. Uh, pawat isang Fisher man, dalawang 100 meters lang, 200 meters lang. Kahit ulam na yun, ma'am, hindi makakapagulang yun, pagulam yun, kung ganun tanyo, bibigay yun sa mga Fisher Fox. Minaassure yun, na ganun yung, ano, kasi, po, bilang, ano, narasan po na yan. Kung walang ang, uh, 1 kilometer, 2 kilometer na lambat, ay, wala kang, oh, wala. Binigay yun, kasi is 100 meters lang, na lambat. Kaya ang, ang ginawa ng mga Fisher, mga Fisher Fox, pinagbibinta. Oo, pinagbibinta para lumaki, para...
Hindi na high five din magkakain ng Fisher?
O, yun na, yun, hindi, sinasabi ko lang, yung acto na nangyari dun. Kasi hindi naman talaga feeling panghanap away po para 200 meters lang.
So, sana po yung sabi ninyo dun sa mga incharge, lahat, dun sa project na pagbibigay yun.
Kaya nga, kinakamangko kung ano yung feeling sa Luka.
Siguro, nga lang, ma'am, no, um, since agriculture po yung may hawak, uh, please kindly provide na lang po sa August body, yung shopping list, as you mentioned yun. Tapos yung makita po na, nilakapit po rin yung shopping list, sila na lang mag-ordered with the City Agriculture Office. So, for the information of body, nanalo kasi yung ating city dun sa Masaganan at Malinis na Karagatan NNK, at ang price po natin ay 18 million. So, may coordination po sigurong Agriculture Office, through our barangays, para may ma-i-propose po tayong projects. Siguro sa atin lang po, council, kung may maisip po mayroon na fishery related, we communicate with the Agriculture Office. For now po, pwede pabigay na lang po ng minom shopping list para at least, uh, pwede mo na i-propose yung ang ating mga projects para po sa Malinis at Masaganan Karagatan. So, any other questions to that, last question, Councillor Ado.
Um, sa 18B, nakalagay sa number two na obligation na LGU Alaminos for provide the corresponding counterpart funds for the above listed project, if needed. Pataraan san natin dito, counterpart natin.
Your Honor, wala po po sa yung, pero as needed po, as needed yun tawag. As needed.
Eh, di kasi, we understand, but hindi kasi pwede kami makareklam ng authority na open. So, uh, kapag, we understand na, as needed, pero we, kasi, specific ano. Parang, that will not exceed 1 million.
Sa natin umuwi?
O, sa gubungin.
Sa general part na, o?
Pwede po natin slash it. Kasi for county, tayo na.
Ang galing?
Pwede po natin.
Pwede naman po, pero kailangan lang malaman namin, kung saan magagalik, pwede magkano.
Ang BIFAR po kasi yun.
Okay, pero siguro, we can slash it, pagkailangan, tsaka nilang.
Hindi po, kasi nga, graphiko eh, na, parang, pwede na. Bakit pagkailangan ng alam mo saan mag, magbigay ng counterpart?
Usually kasi, mga pangarin, usually, ma...
Disunit po mga.
Perfect, kaya kumunta si assessor, si ano, si regional, tapos, pagunog dito, diging nyan, kung tama, si pangarin, komendation, mga, usually, may ganun eh.
Translations fortunately for.
Siguro slash na lang. Ang galing na lang?
O, tagal na natin 'to.
Okay, okay.
Mas pagkailangan, pwede naman balik na lang.
Oo, tagal na lang natin 'to.
Or yun kasi, ma... Okay, oh. Is there no more questions? Uh, would like to thank our guests, Pam, Kamki, thank you very much. So, we will now lift the suspension of the rules. It is a pleasure to body, Councillor Prof. Ranoy, the Chairman of Agriculture. Just be moved by Councillor Prof. Ranoy, seconded by Councillor Devion, that we include item number three in our business of the day for deliberation given that, uh, we, we, okay. Um, number two, letter B, which states provide the corresponding counterpart funds for the above listed projects if needed. Any objection? Hearing none, the said item is included in our business of the day for deliberation.
Next item is the gathered communications received. We have for review, review of documents of overseas accreditation. So far, we have three applicants.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, we feel the committee hearing on October 14, 9 o'clock in the morning.
Councillor Prof. Ranoy, the Chairman of the Confederates, moves to schedule a committee hearing regarding the CSO of vegetation on October 14, 9 o'clock in the morning. Next item.
I will proceed to the under signed business. The first item is the resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Ryan Cisildeste to enter into memorandum agreement between the HINT Fundy and the University of the Fishery in Los Banios for the conduct of carrying capacity study in the Hundred Islands National Parks, Palaminos City Pangasinan.
Councillor Sison.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I hope that we include this resolution for business of the day for deliberation.
Counterpart fund for R 101.
Uh, wala, fundy.
See, I think we have a resolution na ginawa ng thato, diba?
Ah, papalitan na po niyang name, Mayor Art, last year, plus under the Mayor Art. Papalitan na lang.
Yeah, wala na, okay. Councillor Sison, the Chairman of the List, moves to include the said item, um, for the business of the day for deliberation for the study of the LGU and, uh, the Yuta Los Banios para sa carrying capacity in the Hundred Islands. Any objection? Hearing none, the said item is included in our business of the day. Councillor Bakai.
Resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Ryan Cisildeste to affix his signature in conformity to the adoption of the memorandum of partnership agreement with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources represented by the DNR to adopt the Provincial Cultural Development and Management Plan of Pangasinan.
Oo, dito. Pero saan na lang papalik sila dito? Dito yun? Nagpresent siya, sinasabi papalik siya. For hearing, may question? Okay, Councillor Sison.
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, I hope that we can read this resolution for a committee hearing on October 10.
Ma'am, matuha sa iyo, comment?
Uh, behind there.
October 10. So, ano yung nalabo?
October 14? Wait, ano na? May talawa tayo sa 14? Wait, may talawa tayo sa barangay? Kasi, na, na, na.
So, when's the?
October 16? What time po?
Uh, 9:00.
9:00, eh? Okay, uh, Councillor Sison moves to schedule a committee hearing on October 16, 9 o'clock in the morning regarding the for sure for sure partnership agreement, for sure development and management plan of the province. Okay? Next item, ay, yes?
Who, who are the, uh, invitees? Do you invite any, uh, sectoral leader?
Ay, hindi, sabi ni Dakti, pamalik ako sa yun, diba? Hindi pala man.
Hindi pa yung, yung course na tiyakap.
Pa sa, kasi hindi pa sa session na lang ulit, para, na tayo. Ewan. So...
Pwede sa 15, sir?
Okay. 15 na man? Yung mga paniniya, yung mga regular session, any next, na lang. Defer na lang, okay. We have to defer it. Okay, next item. So, siguro, we invite the penroom officer again to give us an update on ano ang nangyari sa plan. I say it was on the works, and then, I'm sure that organized siya with the dining office and the presiding office, so siguro, babo na yun. Kung ano ba yun. So, October 16, right? 9:00 AM.
Have any suggestion na go into that session?
O pwede naman, October 22. Okay, we move it, we move the session from October 16, 9:00 AM to October 22 in our next, in that regular session, October 23. Any objection? Hearing none. Next item, Madam Secretari.
The next item is the resolution formally creating, organizing the People's Law Enforcement Board of the City of Palaminos Pangasinan for Zoo One to Republic Act 6795.
Do we need a resolution for an ordinance?
This is a resolution?
Resolution, no. Councillor Sidi Ado, the Chairman of the List. Councilor Siri Dado, Chairman of the List.
We, uh, we shall deliver it to the business of the day.
It is moved by Councilor Siri Dado, seconded by Councilor Obanren, seconded by Councilor Cisson, that we include the resolution organizing the People's Law Enforcement Board in the City of Alaminos, Pangasinan. Any objection? Hearing now, the said resolution is included in our business of the day. Madam Chigatari.
The next item is the resolution temporarily resourcing the proposed farm-to-market road project to the Department of Budget and Management for funding assistance amounting to fifty million pesos.
I was informed that, uh, this is for, uh, the different barangays, and we will be, uh, what we will be requesting for the TV.
These are for barangay Victoria, Pukalpukal, Pandayan, Pokrido, Dulakart, and Pokrido, Balayan.
Baka 'yung sa pumantay na matagal na nating, matagal na nangyari ko sa Councilor, ano, Pukalpukal. Any, Councilor Paterera, the Chairman of Infrastructure, shall we include this in our business of the day? It is moved by Councilor, um, Kusilito Paterera, the Chairman of Infrastructure, seconded by Councilor Borning and Councilor Sibera, to include the said item in our business of the day. Any objection? Hearing now, the said item is included in our business of the day. Madam Chigatari.
I proceed to the committee report. The first item is the preparation committee report from the hearing of September thirtieth regarding the supplemental budget twenty nineteen of the following barangays: barangay Emangbangan, Balejadan, Landok, Pandan, Tanaytay, and Tawi-Tawi.
Councilor Dado, second.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, the committee hearing was conducted by the president, Bertiti, and the like. Present for my police, Councilor Apulnabakay, Naranapago, Oscar Boling, to present for the representative from the Balikoffice, Madam Pita Masat, Madam Batiman Ahmad, um, barangay, barangay Puligi, GEMN, um, Bayas, and barangay Figras, from the U.S. barangay. It's the present representative of barangays presented to the committee, the proposed supplemental budgets in final verifications during the deliberation of the respective budgets. The committee has admitted that those exceeding budget hearings of barangay state's superior budgets should be submitted second to the just deal. Based on the hearing conducted, the, uh, certification from the local finance committee for there is such a compliance to applicable budgeting rules and laws for the department of the minimum budget of the, uh, six barangays in order in brief, um, Pangan, Balitaan, Landok, Pandan, Tanaytay, and Tawi-Tawi. The other findings to be here by most of the afternoon is committee report, and the inclusion in the business of the day, resolution is nearly valid and imperative as a whole with its entirety following supplemental budgets as I mentioned.
It is moved by Councilor Siri Dado, second. Seconded by Councilor Apulbaka, and Councilor Apulbaka for the adoption of the committee report and the said item be included in our business of the day for deliberation. Any objection? Amendment, discussion, hearing? The said committee report is hereby adopted and the said item be included in our business of the day. Next item, Madam Chigatari.
Next item is the joint committee report from the hearing of September thirtieth regarding the dialogue with concerned residents and sangurian barangay members of barangay Victoria on the alleged prohibition and fishing activities in the territorial waters of Alaminos Fish and Water Authority.
Councilor Siri Dado. Is this, uh, urgent, uh, do we have one? Do we have a second before it? Uh, if, Councilor, don't think this is not, uh, if it is not, uh, urgent, uh, may I suggest that we defer it in the next session para di tayo pumata.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh.
Do you have the, uh, reading of the report? Well, thanks.
It is, it is removed by Councilor Siri Dado, seconded by Councilor Deleon, and Councilor Apulbaka to defer the said report in our next regular session to give way to other attention agenda. Any objection? Hearing now. Next item.
Joint Committee Report from the Public Hearing held on October two regarding the ordi- proposed ordinance and ordinance prohibiting throwing tea in the City of Alaminos.
Councilor Apulnabakay.
A public hearing of the said subject matter was conducted on October two, twenty nineteen. With me were Councilors Vernarapago, Siri Laura Doc, Oscar Borning, and legal and among the barangay residents, Apulbaka, together with the representatives from DHWD, also academ, parents association, and barangay council members aided by their own barangays. Highlights of the discussion includes the following issues and concerns. Under section three and definition of terms, students, the term covers all students enrolled in any school within the city regardless of the latter's residence since the proposed measure is territorial in products. In the same section, definition of terms, throw one, each term would not only pertain to students or pupils who are absent from school without a valid code, but it also include those who are present in the morning, escape or tuck classes in the same morning, and forth with return to school in the afternoon. To delete section four prohibited acts which provides it shall be unlawful for the teacher and school autor- authorities to knowingly pernive or by insufficient control allow these students to loiter, banger, or disting because common sense dictates that no educator in his right, right mind would concern his or her students pupils to loiter. To reduce the prescribed school hours, as prescribed for in section four prohibited acts from seven thirty AM to seven PM to seven thirty AM to five PM instead. As the sanctions on parents legal guardian to violate the ordinance as provided for the section eight sanctions, a PTA resident from great Hiliyan college appealed to the committee to reconsider the penalty of fines provided in said measure by either reducing it or imposing additional number of days of therapy in education seminars for parents who do not have the resources to pay the fine. The members of the committee and the PTA representative have agreed that additional number of days ranging from one day to ten days should be imposed on parents or guardians who cannot afford to pay the fines provided in the ordinance. To include additional provision imposing penalties among transport group who would transport students anywhere during class hours without permission from their respective schools or parents. The PTA associations from various schools were encouraged to craft their respective resolution embodying a provision on gate pass to validate the reasons of these students going outside during lunch break. A representative from the academ claimed that those students who would go out for lunch have the tendency to escape or tuck from the afternoon classes and loiter. Those of gate pass should be required. According to a parent, she stressed that one of the reasons why students or pupils opted to go out from the school reminded is during lunch break is to hide their lunch outsides because apart from the wider range of foods to choose from, it is much cheaper than those available in the school campaigns. The latter suggested to the school division representatives to provide equally affordable, quality and nutritious meals in all school campaigns to entice our children not to buy foods outside, which would also reduce their chances to escape from their classes. In view of the above stated findings, the committee hereby moves to the adoption of this committee report, and the same committee recommends that the proposed measure be scheduled for a secret meeting during the next regular session.
Anak-anak din 'yung mga resolution of PTA. So, Madam Chigatari, siguro we can, uh, defer muna, up until dumating 'yung mga, uh, ulit, okay, la, Councilor, bago natin, calendar for second reading, archite natin 'yung dari sa PTA, dari sa letter.
Atsakasin mo na 'yung.
Ah, para sabay-sabay, kasi pag na next session, pani-. Archite natin 'yung. So, okay, Councilor Apulnabakay moves to the adoption of the committee report, and the said item be deferred to our regular session as long as, uh, upon the receipt of the updated act. So, archive naman natin. So, we will archive first, uh, the said measure, up until dumating 'yung draft ng ating, uh, uh, resolution, uh, the ordinance. Okay, any second to that? Second, pray Councilor Cisson, Councilor Verinepe, and Councilor Deleon. Any objection? Hearing now, the said committee report is hereby adopted, and the said, uh, measure be archived pending the draft of the said ordinance. Uh, next item.
I proceed to the business of the day. The first item is the second reading of the ordi- of the proposed ordinance on ordinance regulating back feeding or side feeding that will impede the natural flow of water within the city of Alaminos, requiring locational feeders for those activities and to place penalties for violation thereof.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to the, uh, development of the second reading of the measure and another, uh, second reading during our session.
Twenty-two. Okay, Councilor Siri Dado, the proposal of the ordinance uh, moves to defer the said, uh, ordinance for another second reading on our regular session on October twenty-two. Any objection? Next item.
The next item is the second reading of the proposed ordinance on ordinance regulating the spreading and promotion of junk foods and sugary drinks to preparatory elementary and high school students inside at least one hundred meters perimeter in public and private schools in the City of Alaminos.
Councilor Apulnabakay.
I move for another second reading on the next regular session on October thirteen.
It is moved by Councilor Apulbaka, any second, seconded by Councilor Dado and Councilor Cisson, that we defer, uh, the said item for another second reading in our regular session on October thirteen. Any objection? Hearing now. Next item.
Second reading of the proposed ordinance and ordinance establishing the Alaminos City Technical Vocational Institute and Assessment Center and providing funds thereof.
Councilor Apulbaka.
I move for the third and final reading on our next regular session on October twenty-two, twenty nineteen. So, I move for a second reading.
I have a second reading for our, may not take pa. So, we will, Councilor, Councilor Apulnabakay moves to to defer the said item for another second reading on October twenty-two in our next session. Any objection? Hearing now, the, the item is deferred to October twenty-three.
Resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Brian C. Celeste.
Business of the day.
Business of the day. At the business of the day, we have the resolution approving the partial list of projects funded out of the development fund amounting to one, amounting to one million five hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred seventy-four pesos and eighty-three centavos.
Councilor Siri Dado.
Yes, John, if there are no more comments and concerns on the proposed measure, I hope for the exception.
Respectful, pray, uh, Councilor Siri Dado, seconded by Councilor Paterera, Councilor Cisson, for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing now, the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item.
Resolution approving the partial list of projects funded out of the special purpose of three appropriation of the City of Alaminos amounting to one million two hundred twenty-eight thousand and twenty-five pesos.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if there are no more questions or comments on the proposed measure, I hope for the exception.
It is moved by, by Councilor Siri Dado, seconded by Councilor Vernarapago, Councilor Apulbaka, and Councilor Cisson for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing now, the resolution is hereby adopted. Next item.
Resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Brian C. Celeste to interenter a tripartite memorandum of agreement between and among the local government units of Alaminos City, Pangasinan, the Bureau of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources, Regional Fisheries Office One, and the Regional Fisherfolk Representative for the implementation of the fishery developed projects in line with the city's eighteen million cat award in the recently concluded search for the vote of Stanley Coastal Community in Palilins at Masaganang Kargatan or MNT award.
Councilor Deleon.
Uh, I move for the approval of this resolution, Mr. Chairman.
It is moved by Councilor, Councilor Prophethenoid, seconded by Councilor Apulbaka, and Councilor Deleon for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Madam Chigatari, I note that, uh, to omit the, the fight of the one, after the fight, man. Any objection? Hearing now, the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item.
Resolution authorizing City Mayor Art Brian C. Celeste to interenter a memorandum of agreement by and between the HINT family and the University of the Philippines, Luz-Banyos for the conduct of carrying capacity study in the Hundred Islands National Park, Alaminos City, Pangasinan.
Since this is just, uh, change in technicality, Councilor Cisson.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, if there are no more comments regarding the said resolution, I withdraw.
Council, uh, it is moved by Councilor Cisson, any second, seconded by Councilor Apulbaka for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing now, the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item.
Resolution formally creating, organizing the People's Law Enforcement Board of the City of Alaminos, Pangasinan for Zulu 1 Republic Act sixty-seven ninety-five.
Councilor, uh, Vernarapago, please and orders, you know? Shall we adopt the said resolution?
I move for a resolution, uh, to approve.
We adopt it. Councilor Vernarapago moves to adopt the said resolution, seconded by Councilor Oscar Borning, Councilor Dado, and Councilor Apulbaka regarding the termination of the plan here in Alaminos City. Any objection? Hearing now, the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item.
Resolution regarding endorsing the proposed farm-to-market road project to the Department of Budget and Management for funding assistance amounting to fifty million pesos for barangay Victoria, Pukalpukal, Pandayan, Pokrido, Dulakart, and Pokrido, Balayan.
Councilor Paterera, Chairman of the Structure.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of said resolution.
It is moved by Councilor Paterera, seconded by Councilor Apulbaka, Councilor Oscar Borning, Councilor Deleon, Councilor Cisson, Councilor Sibera, for the adoption of the said resolution. Any objection? Hearing now, the said resolution is hereby adopted.
Resolution declaring valid and imperative as a whole the supplemental budgets twenty nineteen of the following barangays: Emangbangan, Balejadan, Landok, Pandan, Tanaytay, and Tawi-Tawi.
Councilor Siri Dado.
If there are no more questions of the same on the proposed measure, I move for its adoption.
It is moved by Councilor Siri Dado, seconded by Councilor Vernepe, Councilor Cisson, Councilor Sibera, and Councilor Apulbaka. Any objection? Hearing now, the said resolution is hereby adopted. Next item.
Uh, announcement, reminders. Our advance happy birthday greetings to Councilor Dalia M. Deleon, who will celebrate her birthday on October eleven, twenty nineteen.
Objection?
No.
Katan. Katan natin si Councilor Deleon.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday po, Councilor. Any objection? Next, ano, sampo. 'Yung mga misiprati, di isang objection. From the country, Daniel.
Dali sa Pandan.
Any other, any other announcements?
Reminders po, on Tuesday, I, yun po 'yung first one hundred days reported as in City Mayor, so ang session po is already at nine o'clock in the morning. City Mayor, so ang session ko is already at nine o'clock in the morning at the Don Convention, ay, don, yun po, the. Season Convention Center, uh, ano po 'yung uniform?
Ano na, formal?
So, ang City Mayor.
Eh, long, formal. May gana si. Kasi na tayo, uh, barangay.
So, langang barangay daw po kayo, long sixes. Long six daw po, all Filipino na lang daw po sa Pangatimani.
High dress, high dress. High uh, court dress, captain dress, buddy. Any other, any other announcement? Um, birthday girl, would you do the adjournment?
Uh, if there are no more matters to discuss. Uh, I move for the adjournment of today's session.
Our birthday girl moves to adjourn our Sangre and Palooza regular session today, seconded by Counselor Apolbaga. And I'll volunteer Sangre and Palooza the regular session for the second week of October. Alay pong salamat.